Okay, welcome to the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District Board of Education debate. And we have five great candidates seeking our endorsement this year. And those candidates are Keith Coleman, Jason Feldman, John Keane, Maria Leon Vasquez, and Jen Smith. So, welcome to all five. And we're going to begin with the first question. Each question is one minute. There may be some quick follow-up questions. Julie there? Sorry about that. Okay. Okay. Okay, so we're going to begin the debate now. Each answer will be one minute timed by Peter. And the order of each person answering will be done in random. I have everybody's name in a random randomizer site. And so the first answer will go to Jen Smith. And the question is this. Distance learning is the biggest topic on the minds of every parent and student right now. We're in a challenging situation with no federal leadership at all, and a local budget crisis. And we know that this could go on for another year or more. What is the school board's role in managing both the inequity and the mental health challenges created by this environment?
That's a great question. So, the school board's role is being able to minimize any, any issues that, that are rise. The equity issue about access to technology, the hotspots, the ability for everyone to be able to learn, the ability for childcare, I think, has to be looked at. I think that there are resources to be mined and used. And I think that the, the, I'm sorry, the ment-, oh, and mental health. So, mental health is incredibly important. There, I know that they are, I've been on calls, I've been in this distance learning environment with my kids. I'm incredibly impressed by the, the level of teacher engagement and involvement, and their awareness of the mental health issues that are, that our children are going through. And they are incredibly sensitive, and I've heard it all over town, and I've heard it at every school level, secondary and elementary.
Time, time. Thank you. And we'll now go to Keith Coleman.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. The question related to asynchronous learning, which is distance learning in, in definition, is, is complicated, and yet it doesn't fall simply as it relates to isolation of students or apathy of students. So, I actually think that we want to give our students a little bit more benefit of the doubt. Their robust characteristics that they have, so that they can actually collaborate with one another when they're in that distance learning format. When it comes to equity issues, I think that there's got to be a different level of public-private partnership to bring resources to those students that don't have the hardware or even the bandwidth in terms of telecom and, and other community-based checking in. So, I think it more, needs to be more of a holistic kind of a view, where we all are helping each other in that manner. When it comes to mental health, I think we need to meet students where they're at.
Thank you. Time.
Thank you, Keith. And now we'll go to Jason.
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you all. It's a pleasure. Um, distance learning, returning safely to schools, it's, it's the paramount issue on everyone's mind, and the biggest challenge facing our schools right now. And mental health is, is a huge issue concerning that. We have to be ready when the schools reopen, and the board can play a role in this, to have extra psychologists on every campus, to be available to any student that needs it. And we do have the benefit district-wide to know which, which students haven't been accessing the, the distance learning, haven't, haven't been able to be watched by their parent, by their teachers. And those students should be identified, and they should be proactively contacted by mental health professionals. Um, you know, and we need to have a, a safety net beyond that for all of our vulnerable students. Uh, you know, one thing we've learned, you know, as parents during this, this, you know.
Thank you. Time.
Thank you. And let's go to John Keane.
Thank you, everyone. Now that I'm going forth, a lot of stuff has been said already. So, I use our school board rule about not repeating too much information. The inequity, our first priority is to address the learning loss, address our most vulnerable students, students with IEPs, ELL. Complication of that is, we mainstream, we want our, our students with IEPs in our gen ed. We want the same with ELL. That's tricky, but we can get our transition kids in and our earliest learners in. Socio-emotional. We start every day with socio-emotional work with our kids. We're starting that process now. The big issue is going to be how we come back. And what I want to push for, and I think we can do this, is a hybrid with synchronous learning. And at the same time, we will have a full-distance program for the kids and teachers that can come in with on-campus opportunities. I'm calling this the moonshot, but I think it can be done. I think our makeup, we have the resources to do that emotionally, physically, mentally. I think that's something that we can do. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Maria.
Well, good evening, Democrats. Well, being, being just part of the board, we pivoted really quickly in March. And I think at the, at least at that particular moment before we did, I think teachers were at least able to get a little bit of, a little bit of support at that time to, to kind of get an idea of what it would be to pivot. But I think the most during, you know, the, after the spring and evaluating those necessities, of course, it was mentioned by Jen and by John, that we did provide devices for people, hotspots and so forth, for those families that didn't have that. However, we didn't really give them that much, you know, for those families who couldn't get onto those, to use, what is it, the, the devices. Some families weren't ready for that. So, I think the summer, we did do professional development. We, we extended the school year for two, two days, so that we can give the teachers some support in terms of making sure that they were, they had an idea of how they were going to open up in the fall. And we're still continuing to do that, because it's still not running as smoothly as we'd like, but I think they're.
Thank you. Goodbye. Perfect. That's all. Time out.
Okay, thank you, Maria. As a follow-up question, so it's open to anyone who would like to answer. What metrics are being used and what expert advice is being sought to make informed decisions? And then additionally, for the non-incumbents, you may want to answer this question. How would you assess the board's handling of this move to distance learning?
I'm happy to jump in as the, since Maria just went, if we want. Okay, so for, for who we're working with, we're obviously with LA Department of Public Health, with Laco, LA County Office of Education. We work with our similar school districts. Our superintendent, we tasked him early in this process to create a superintendent's group of many, many districts in our area. So, we're finding out what the best practices are. We're doing all these things to be informed and to be driven by science and the experts. Just because I read everything that comes out on COVID does not make me a.
Thank you. Time.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else?
I remind everyone that the time of it to be thirty seconds.
So, go ahead, Maria. Go ahead.
I'll follow up with John in terms of what he has already said. You know, yes, we, we are using a lot of the support mechanisms that, that we have in terms of the other school districts around us. Again, we're all in the same situation that no, there's nothing there. There's no protocols beyond the health and safety that the county and the state has given us. And, and yet the state superintendent of education has given us some, some advice and stuff. But really, it depends upon us locally, our superintendent and our ed services, working with principals, teachers, and just staff, support.
Oh, yeah. So, um, and I would, I would just like to see in the upcoming months, understanding there are, while no one has gone back to school or had the experience of understanding what that looks like or, but there are places who have. So, finding out that information, figuring out what's happened there, knowing, I mean, you know, it's really disheartening watching all these college kids go back to school and things shut down. And so, just understanding what might come would be great.
I'd like to chime in. I think that we certainly want to follow the protocols from LA County Health with respect to reopening of the schools. Folks have talked about a hybrid process that, that may be implemented. And those things are, are, can be robust practices. But one of the things I wanted to say is, we can't wait for the reopening when, when we relate to well-being and mental health of students. There are conversational technology applications using voice Siri Assistant, which kids are already comfortable with. They can act as a trusted intermediary. The kids can talk, do gratitude journaling, talk to Siri, talk about mindfulness, talk about what they want to do that day. We need to take action on the well-being of students now, not later.
Yes, I think I'm the last remaining person. So, the question for the, the non-incumbents was, how would I assess what the board has done? You know, I'm not going to play Monday morning quarterback here, uh, but, you know, there, this is an unprecedented situation. I don't think there was much choice but to shut it down in March. I don't, I think with the spike locally in summer, there wasn't much of a decision either. I think the board's handled that all very well. But now, you know, as we're facing a possible reopening or, or phasing one in, hopefully, that time has been used by the board of the district to get ready and prepare for the reopening. And we're.
Great, thank you. And now we'll move on to the, the district's budget, which was already deficit spending long before the LA County Office of Education shifted the district to basic aid status. How did we get into this crisis? And who is at fault for being caught off-guard by this decision? And we're going to start with Jason.
Um, thank you. Uh, yes, I mean, again, I mean, it's, it's not the point of, of placing blame. You know, it's, it's, it's my understanding that there was a certain tax threshold that was met, which, which made us basic aid. I, I guess my, my only issue would be why it did catch us by surprise. It should have been something that we should have seen coming. And now it's a question of what we're going to do about it, you know, and what, how, how we're going to deal with it. I know there's already been some cuts made. We're going to have to make some other serious choices. We're going to have to do things that are based on cost-effectiveness as much as anything. And, and, you know, I would choose consultants, I mean, I would choose teachers over consultants. I think there are some, you know, I would do a re-emphasis on, on early education, which you can get a lot of bang for buck on that. Tutoring is another thing. It doesn't cost a lot of money. Um, so, there, there's, there's a lot to be, there's a lot to be done, and it's about moving forward and not.
Thank you. And now let's go to Maria.
Well, I think it caught us off-guard, because it does, you know, we've been basic aid. It's one of those things that we're on the fringe of basic aid. So, it, we haven't been in that situation for a long time, established like Beverly Hills has. So, in that regard, the monies that were taken out out of surprise for us, the nine million that cut us off short, really put us in that situation. However, in this last year, we did already budget very conservatively. And on our last meeting, we did see the unadded actuals, and we actually made up that eight to nine million dollar surplus there, because we, we do budget conservatively, but we still are deficit spending. So, we need to make sure we can continue to spend as, for, for programming that's essential for the achievement and success of our students.
Thank you. And let's go to Jen.
Thanks. So, um, I think we've been deficit spending for a really long time. I know, and I, in hindsight, it's, it seems to me we really have to learn from our past. When the recession hit in 2008 and we suffered through all of that, I was grateful to have the reserves that we had, because it really kept us afloat, but we never really seemed to get out of that deficit spending. We have to remember that we can't do that. We have, absolutely have to have a balanced budget, and we have to build reserves. So, when crisis does come, we need to have it prepared. Uh, and when we did come out of the recession and we, and money started flowing again, we did not, we did not move in that direction, and we expanded too quickly for needs that, you know, that we should have moved slow, more slowly on. That, that would be my opinion. And I think that, that we just have to be very, very conscious of how we move forward and aware of our history and how we got here, and not do it, and, and not do it, and get ourselves back to a fiscal.
Thank you. Time.
Thanks. And let's go to Keith.
Uh, yeah. So, as folks had described before, it's not about pointing fingers, but as the last few speakers described, there was fiscal irresponsibility and overspending in the past, and that was on their watch. So, as we move forward, we want to be more mindful about how we utilize that revenue. Uh, we want to move forward in an innovative way, look at new revenue models, social impact bonds. There's a lot of private equity, a lot of dry powder out there, looking at other public-private partnership models, endowments. We want to be much more innovative when it comes to financing education for the benefit, benefit, benefit of the students and the benefit of the district. So, I think we want to be more innovative and proactive in finding new financial ways to provide those benefits to students.
Thank you. And let's go to John.
Right. It's hard to talk about this topic in one minute, because there's so much to say. I will say that the chronic underfunding of California schools falls at the lap of Sacramento. Governor Brown funded us with one-time funds for the past eight years before Governor Newsom came in, and that led to, that led to irrational spending. I've been on the board three and a half years. I came from the Financial Oversight Committee with an understanding of school finance. I was PTA president for four years, site governance of ten years at schools, understanding school budgets. What we've done in the past couple of years is trim off that excess budgeting fat. We've cut back on consultants, cut back on outside PDs. At the same time, we're starting to build up our reserves. Our credit rating was increased twice in the past two years, which has allowed us to save taxpayers in our community twenty-two million dollars on bond payments. I, I think what we need to look at when we talk about, going forward, I think Maria said, I'm looking at the clock. We had a balanced budget this year. We are on the right path.
Thank you.
Okay, great. And let's go to the next question. We've heard a lot about public-private partnerships as a potential solution to solve the budget crisis. What does this term mean to you? And how do we ensure our public schools remain free of corporate interference? And we'll start with Keith.
Oh, I think that we want to look at this from a frame of collective impact, which is really a concept that is more descriptive of a holistic coming together and collaborative effort. It's not a us versus them, us versus the corporations. We want to look at that in a much more dynamic fashion. And so, there, there are ways to utilize these relationships. They use it in infrastructure and, and other sorts of forms such as that. And so, I think we want to be much more proactive in having those kinds of discussions with, with large, large players that have, you know, billions of dollars on their balance sheets, and they could come up with ways to sort of assist the district in doing what it's supposed to, which is guiding students and bettering humanity. And so, we want to move forward in that way directly and execute those private-party partnership relationships.
Thank you. Let's go to Maria.
Well, you know, in terms of those relationships, you know, they can happen, but it's almost like what we do with, with the city of Santa Monica and our MOU, is that there's discussions in terms of how those partnerships will work, what is their investment in terms of the support of, of, of the work of supporting our children in, in education. But they don't set our agenda. We set our agenda. So, if we are going to have those partnerships, then we have to then, as a school board, decide on the agenda of how those funds will be used, and they will be, they'll be supporting us. But they cannot be controlling the way we are able to use those funds. And always, many of those organizations probably are there to support disenfranchised students, and maybe for those that, that could help us in, in that regard, in, in supporting programming for students of need in this district.
Thank you. And now we'll go to Jen.
I, thank you. Um, I have to say, I would be incredibly wary of public-private partnerships. I don't, I, I think that if, I think society and our government and our city and our county and our state and our federal government have, are, have a responsibility to put programming in our public schools as a public entity. I, I think that there are ways that private funds have been used, and, but if programs are worth having, they're worth paying for out of, from, from a societal point of view. I feel like there, and it needs to be very, very sustainable. So, I don't know how private funds are, are sustainable in a way, and whether, how, do those programs go away or not. I, I don't, I, I'm a little wary of that partnership and it may become looming large and feeling responsible in a way that I don't think they should be responsible for educating the children of, in a public education.
Thank you. Let's go to Jason.
Thank you. Um, you know, my reaction as a parent is, you know, don't corporatize our schools. But, you know, as Keith was saying, he made a lot of good points. There, there's a practical side to this. And there, there are ways to incorporate the private sector without, you know, students wearing an advertisement on their back or something like that. You know, it's, it's a little more complex, and it's more nuanced than that. And your infrastructure, as Keith said, is, is a really good opportunity to, to include the private sector. Um, and, and I believe there, there are many other ways. And I think it's, you know, it's, it just, you have to collaborate in, in a number of ways on, on the board, and this is, this is a way that we need to collaborate. Listen to people that have an expertise in it, talk to your corporate partners, see if there's something that's reasonable for our students without corporatizing our schools.
Thank you. And finally, let's go to John.
Thanks so much, John. So, we do have public-private partnerships. The relationship that our district has with the city is unparalleled. Nobody has measure GSH or measure YY, helping to support schools, helping to support affordable housing, and helping to support police and fire. That's an amazing relationship. Our relationship with SM, SMC, our college, is a terrific relationship. I, I'm glad Jen brought that up. There's this implication that private business is going to come in and salvage public education. I've worked as a PTA leader for a lot of years. Big funders don't want our district. We are twenty-eight percent free and reduced lunch. Those students have a lot of needs, but we're not, we're not attractive to those kinds of funders who want to come in and support LAUSD or somebody bigger. Keith talked about social impact bonds, great for early education. We actually pursued something about ten years ago. It fell through and went to Pomona, which had a better demographic that, that worked for what they were trying to do. So, there are things out there, but as Jen said, we educate our children, and, and I, I think that our.
Thank you.
Speak past it, but I would look at our relationship with the city.
Thanks, John. Okay, so now let's move on to the next question. While our students are distance learning, they're using upwards of ten different platforms or apps each day. How is data privacy and security being handled during this period? And are we doing a good enough job of protecting the students? And let's go to John.
All right. Yeah, because I was last, the last two, so I'm glad it's evening out. It's like a fantasy football draft. Thank you, John Katz. Um, this is not something that I am so well-versed in. I'm excited to say that PTA Council has made this one of their core priorities for this year. PTA Council has representatives from every PTA in the district coming together. It's a wonderful group. Jennifer was, was president of it for two years. PTA Council's made this a priority. This Friday, we have a PTA Council meeting with our head of IT, our head of Student Services. I will be there as a board liaison. We are, we are getting in front of this. We have a national platform that we follow. We have a PTA platform that we're following. This is something that is very serious for men of our families right now, and we are trying to be as proactive as we can with the leaders at each of our school sites. And that's what PTA Council is. So, the, the parent leaders, we are bringing them in, and we are empowering them, and we're going to learn from them and work together to address this issue. Thank you.
Thanks. Let's go to Maria.
Well, like I said, I'm not that well-versed, but, no, no, I think we, I agree with John. We, we have been trying to keep on, you know, keep on top of this. And basically, when, when we are allowing teachers to allow the students to come in to their Zoom classrooms and the different platforms, I think they have a good eye in terms of the students that are in their classroom and who's logging in. So, at least they have that good perspective, just making sure that, that nobody on the outside is getting the information. The other, the other perspective of it is that the information, I guess, it's always been seen that, that we keep this information and that we sell this information to unknown individuals, but we don't. A lot of the information that we kept, keep about students is kept in-house for use for them to be able to do the reporting that they need to do without relaying that information, personal information of families and students to the agencies that they work with to do the statistical analysis that they need to do. But I think that, that I'm going to probably participate in that on Friday myself to get.
Thank you. Time.
Thank you. Let's go to Jason.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, I fully support our, our PSTA Council's recent adoption of the National PTA's Position on Student Data Privacy and Security. You know, distance learning has increased our immediate needs to protect student data from the plethora of ed tech vendors gaining access to these data, as well as ongoing problems with data hacking, which has increased due to distance learning. I also support the Coalition of Over One Hundred Experts and Advocacy Organizations across the country, calling for schools, whether classes are in-person or remote, to center meaningful offline learning for students instead of making hasty purchases of ed tech or something like that. But I think we need to, you know, I need, we need to have a committee. There are a lot of parents that are all over this issue, and it's very, very serious to them. I think we should set up an advisory committee made up of, of many of these parents who can vet and review privacy policies in terms of service agreements and vendors.
Great, thank you. And let's go to Jen.
Yeah, so I was sitting on the council board last year when we did pass the resolution, and it's been a concern. We've actually also had our communications people and IT people in talking about data privacy. I think that the district, I have been in touch with the district, and I have, I know that they follow all the guidelines, state guidelines and federal guidelines of privacy for the kids, and however we can tighten it up and make sure that we aren't hacked, we aren't, that our, the data isn't vulnerable, would be very beneficial, and to be proactive at making sure that's what happens with the data for, from our kids.
Thank you. And now we'll go to Keith.
Well, I'll echo the sentiments of the other speakers with respect to the district moving forward in a concerted way to handle data privacy issues, especially in this, this distance learning model that we're in now. In some respects, I would imagine that the firewall that's up, that the district has, is doing a good job. Uh, so, you know, across the country, there have been obviously Zoom bombs that have occurred with, you know, large Fortune 500 companies. And so, that kind of intrusion is going to happen. But I would say that I, I'm confident that the district's IT folks are in good stead with respect to that. Alternatively, I think what we want to do with student data and student privacy is be a little bit more clear with parents on what that is, and then also help the students to understand in this space how to be better digital citizens, so they can understand when things occur in other areas that they're online, that they're able to handle them in a reliable way. And so, I think that this.
Thank you. Time.
Okay, thank you. And now let's move on. The, during our interview process and throughout the campaign, we've heard about the elimination of the Head Start Early Childhood Education Program. Why was the program eliminated? What exactly was put in its place? And are we better or worse for this change? And we'll go first to John.
Yeah, I was like willing you to call on me. We left Head Start because Head Start no longer served our community. We found that we did not have the, our, our people who needed it were too wealthy at forty-five thousand dollars a year to qualify. So, when we left Head Start, we actually increased participation of families that did not have access to free quality healthcare, childcare by twenty-five percent. And we were, we did, we made this decision because our staff, who we respect, came to us and said, this is what we believe we should do. Had we not done this, we would have been defunded by Head Start either twelve or eighteen months ago. Our staff made the right decision. The board supported them with the right decision. Our community supports us in this decision by, by approving GSH, which gives us money for early education. Look, if we are serious about achievement gap, equity issues, social justice, it starts with our youngest learners. By us bringing more children in that need quality preschool, this is how we're going to make a difference. I am so proud of this thing that we did.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. And let's go to Jen.
Uh, I, I actually totally agree with John. I sat through those meetings. I think it was a very, very wise decision. I think that getting all the kids within Santa Monica into their home schools, being able to have access and room to that for the, our community for preschool is really, really wonderful. Both of my kids went to public preschool. It was, they were stellar programs, and I, I just echo everything that John said.
There you go. Great. Let's, let's go to Jason now.
Hi there. Um, well, you know, I'm a little surprised to hear about the, the community support part, because I've, I've received a lot of comments and emails about how people are, you know, very upset about what happened with Head Start. So, I mean, hey, and I, I understand, you know, what, what's not clear is, you know, where the, the funding is coming from that Head Start was providing. And there was a five-million-dollar grant that we, that, that we didn't apply for. Um, and that, that, that money's gone. I mean, so, so Head Start is gone, but we still have early education. And we still have a vibrant early education here, but I don't know if the data's in on how successful it's been or that every kid is accounted for. Um, but at, at least it's, it's nice to hear that there, that there was a plan and it was thought out. It wasn't something that, that, that took the board by, by surprise. And, you know, it is, it is an opportunity, a huge opportunity to close the achievement gap, and there has to be a focus on, on, on early education. Um, and.
Thank you. Let's go to Maria.
No, the board took it very seriously in terms of the move to bring child, you know, to bring, you know, daycare back to, to us in-house, mainly because many of our families in with two, a two-person family making minimum wage couldn't qualify for Head Start anymore. So, it was making it very difficult for our families to get any kind of childcare in the district. Um, the fact that we, we're allowing more families on a sliding scale to participate means that the budget is coming from the, the money that, the, the million dollars that we put in from the district, some of the money that we get from state and federal, and also from the fees that we charge, the private fees that we charge our families. This first year was successful. We actually made about two million. This first year was successful. We actually made about $2 million profit this year, which was used unfortunately, well fortunately, because we kept our staff working until the end of June. So that money that was, we could have had $2 million had it not been for COVID, there would have been a $2 million profit in this movement. So, I mean, the fact that we have Dr. Sam Arjuna
Thank you, Tom.
was a good thing.
Thank you. Let's go to Keith.
In my service as co-chair on the district's Intercultural Equity and Excellence Committee, this issue came up a number of times. It was very clear that there were a host of families of color that were concerned about this process and policy moving forward. So it's interesting to hear that allegedly those families are still being covered under this directive. I'm not so sure about that. The last speaker just described that there were private fees charged with families. Some of the very families I just spoke of that were marginalized and low income may not have been able to pay those fees. And almost sounds like doing this programming on the backs of families that are marginalized. And so I'm not that clear on whether or not that program is still working in that fashion and that it's inclusive to diverse families in the district. So I'd like to see that data.
Well, let me respond to that. This is going to be an actual forum on that, John.
Yep.
Because in terms of what, when I, when I said sliding scale, that means it's for those families that based upon the fact that they were not, they could not afford to pay, they didn't pay. It's all based upon income. So in terms of the income schedule, it didn't change from what it was as Head Start. So all those families that were receiving services continue to receive services. I think people were just, didn't understand the dynamics of how financially the program was going to be functioning without this big federal monies, where it would have eliminated a lot of our middle families that could not have received any, any support for them to continue to work because they wouldn't have qualified for Head Start.
I think, I think the main point
to address some of the misconceptions that were brought up in there, or at least provide answers to them.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
If I can as well after.
We're going to go to John. Okay.
So the funding, measured GSH, if you look at the wording of it, allows for money for early ed. I'm surprised that Keith said allegedly doing this. That implies that I am playing fast and loose. What it was, Head Start only allowed up to 160% of the poverty threshold. We can expand that by bringing in more families who have the working poor. We went from 65 families to 83 families. And all Head Start services are available to all of our students at all of our preschools now. And now we have better data going from transitional kindergarten to kindergarten. It is far more cohesive. We are providing more services to more children. We are doing it because we are a wealthy district. Being fiscally prudent doesn't mean we never spend money. It means we spend money where we get the most benefit from, and our earliest, most vulnerable learners are where we get this most benefit. There's nothing alleged about this. We are working with families and expanding the threshold to give free preschool. That's why we did this.
Thank you. And I'm going to bring you in, Keith, in a second, but I told Jason he was next.
Thank you. I think the main point is that the district is now footing this bill that we didn't apply, reapply for the Head Start grant. And that, you know, that now the district's footing the bill in a time when we are in a budget crisis. And, and I agree with Keith that the data is not back on the fact that all these students are covered, and it does seem like it was on the backs of marginal students.
Thank you. And let's go to Keith.
Yeah, and I'd like to add to Jason's comment that he just made in terms of data. And, you know, looking at the data is helpful. It's needed. Transparency is a good thing. You know, when I got on the IDAC Committee, I was told that math proficiency levels in the district were certain, at a certain level. And then when you disaggregated that data by race, it was clear that black boys had a less than 10% proficiency in math. But when the data was put out to public, that information did not show that. And so what I just want to see is the data and ensure that the efficacy of the families that need those services are being met. So let's just see what the data shows.
Keith, that's a very good, that's a very good point that you brought up, and I agree with you on the data about the math data. I agree with you. I believe on this case, the data, you will be pleased with the data when it comes out for early ed. And for Jason, I just have to reinforce, Head Start would have defunded us 12 to 18 months ago. The $750,000 that followed our students would have gone away. It's 750. I also want to point out, our budget was balanced this year. We are making the right fiscal decisions. We're spending where we need to spend, and we're cutting where we don't need to spend. Look, opinions are, I agree with your opinion. You are entitled to any opinion you want. You believe we shouldn't have done it, but the facts are the facts on this one.
Okay.
We had full support of the city, the childcare task force that supported us. They just had a big, what is it, a meeting webinar on Monday to bring out the numbers regarding childcare. And they were very supportive. So we're talking about all the childcare vendors in the whole city supported the move that our district did in terms of bringing it home for all of our families to participate.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next subject with this one is with regards to special needs education. We know that some of these students thrive best when integrated into the regular curriculum, while others perform better in a more controlled environment. What's your philosophy on managing this, especially in a distance learning environment? And how can the school board better serve students with special needs? Let's go to Keith first.
Well, thank you so much. This wonderful opportunity of special education is close to me. My middle sister was multi-handicapped blind. My mother was a special education teacher, and so this is not a policy issue for me. I think that we want to look at special ed education children as being just that special, but we want to look at those robust characteristics that they do have. Let's look at children on the spectrum and those with autism. They can do certain jobs that people that are standard or normal like you and I that we cannot do because they don't have that sense of focus and that sense of attention. So I would hope that as we continue to move special education forward, that we implement things that can really drive the self-agency, drive the self-efficacy, build up the self-determination of these students, not as castaways, but as individuals that have talent.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Keith. Let's go to Jason now.
Thank you. Yeah, this is also a very personal issue for me as well. My, one of my daughters is a special education student, has an IP. And, you know, as a parent, it's been very difficult with the distance learning. There's really been nothing that has been afforded to special education students in terms of extra ability to deal with distance learning. And I know that there's some just physical problems with that, but it's been extremely difficult and disappointing. But now they're talking about, we got clearance from the governor a couple of weeks back that students can return that get one-on-one. And it looks like, you know, profoundly vulnerable students are going to benefit from that shortly. But you have those, the more in-between students that are in a general education class that have pullout services.
Thank you, Tom.
are not going to be able to go back to school and are not going to be able to benefit by any of this. And they're going to have to fend for themselves along with the Gen Edge students.
Thank you. Jason, let's go to John.
Yeah, and to finish what Jason is saying, and to Keith, thank you, Keith. I think what you were about to say is, we're trying to create independence with students so that they can be successful with what they're doing. And Jason, what you're talking about, how do we get, we know that we have, like, the transition students that we're working with and our early education students we're working with. We have students in general at classrooms who are mainstreaming, who are getting their general ed and then getting their extra services on top of that. They're being inundated with screens. It's not working. These are the kids that have to come back in January. This is why we have to get schools open. I'm proud. Look, I don't know Jason well. We've talked one time, I think. I work with his wife on the Special Ed District Advisory Committee. He's committed to this. She's wonderful. She's committed to this, too. We do such great work in the normal situations, collaborative classrooms and the things that we do. But these are our most vulnerable students. They are twice gifted, and yes, we need to get back on campus and help all of our special, special needs students.
Thank you for that, John.
Thanks, John. And let's go to Jen now.
Yeah, I have to agree. I think that this is a very hard situation, and I think every, and many kids have many different needs. And we have to meet them at their needs, and I do hope that we can get them back before January, maybe, into the classrooms on our school campuses and be able to at least bring them maybe in for, for some one-on-ones and from, for some counseling and for some therapies, things that they might be able to do at school that they can't do at home. And I think the flexibility, we need some flexibility there. I think that, that special education in general needs some great attention. I think we, I think we do have some other systemic problems when we do go back full-time that we have to sort of work on and make sure that every child is getting what they need.
Thank you. And we'll go to Maria.
Well, I think with the clearance, as was mentioned earlier, with the governor allowing us to start bringing back some of our kids, you know, pretty soon. I think that's what we're working for. I know that the district has been working with our director of special education to understand those students. We have a broad spectrum of students across the board in terms of special education, but we need to make sure that we can identify those that specifically we need to bring in as soon as possible to be able to do well with the safety, to meet all the safety concerns, to bring them back into a classroom situation with teachers, so their safety involved with the teachers, with the student, with the family, so that we can provide, start providing one-on-one. And I'm hoping it's before January. I mean, we're getting, we're getting the clearance already. It should have started as of yesterday. I know we're still working on it, and like everybody else, everybody's trying to work on it, trying to work on the safety measures. But I hope that fairly soon we will be able to start bringing those kids. There's no way that these kids are going to be able to learn. I've had too many emails from families that are just pulling their hair out because it's
Thank you, Tom.
not able to do that at home with these children.
Thank you. And now let's go to the next question. So, "Our students are attending a school at a time of great civil unrest. Issues of racism, climate injustice, gun violence, and many others threaten our daily life. A few years ago, when students organized a walkout, it was met with some resistance from the school community. As a school board member, would you have any limitations on how, when, where, or why students are allowed to protest?" Let's go to Jason first.
Thank you. Um, you know, I support protests. I support demonstrations. It's a good way to build leadership. It builds character. But when you're talking about from the district, do you give, you know, do you put no rules or no constraints on it? Of course, there have to be time and place constraints. Even our constitution calls for that. You know, there might be cause for kids to have walkouts. There might be kids, cause for them to even boycott or go on strike. But that doesn't mean the district has to support a walkout or a strike, which is very disruptive to school. But at the same time, there has to be an environment of discourse and open dialogue. The district has to deal judiciously with incidents of racial bias, and we still have them. It's still a big problem. The district has to lead by example and be a place of fairness and tolerance and keep a dialogue open about these subjects as they come up and hope for some activism. But there have to be some constraints on it, yes.
Thank you. Let's go to Keith.
Well, it's clear that the last few months of this double pandemic have really exercised and highlighted the systemic racism in the United States, as well as the metropolitan equity and inequity issues, which is really not just about its school district, nor about just the city. It's about industry and government. So it's really about a collective view of reframing values and belief systems. And so, again, the Dear Sam Ohai blog of students was a clear evidence that the adults are not minding the store. These students' voices have not been heard. They've been injured, harmed, traumatized, and they're speaking out in that manner. And so we want to let them have their voice. The leadership expressed by students across this country and young people has been unparalleled in the history of this country. Leading with passion, conviction.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Keith. And let's go to Jen.
So that gun, the gun control protest that happened a few years ago, which was an amazing thing in our district. I had not seen, I'd been, you know, I have 15 years in this district, and I thought it was fantastic. I thought the school handled it fairly, I thought the schools handled it fairly well. They need to understand where all their kids are at all times, and I think they gave them opportunities and ways to do it. I think it probably could have, could be better, and I do think, I'll agree with Jason and Keith about making sure that we are listening and hearing kids and understanding what's happening in their world and addressing things and letting them have their voice and letting them have it loudly if they need to. So I, I think they should be able to create and make their voice in a protest way that we, and we should support that.
Well, I'd like to address that for a second because oftentimes, students make those comments when they don't see people that look like them. You know, this is also about a question of diversity of thought, right? And innovation that comes from a wide variety of perspectives. You know, there's a recent McKinsey study that shows that women and people of color that run firms outperform firms that are not run by women and not run by people of color. And so we can go into all sorts of forms of gender bias and investment risk and et cetera. We need diverse, innovative, inclusive, and diverse leadership on this board that reflects this country and reflects the quality and merits of those who have those voices. Students need to see somebody that looks like them and has the kind of experiences that can bring dynamic and thoughtful programming, allowing them to be their best selves. And one of the things I'll do when I get on the board is foster an X Prize.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Maria, you're next. Go ahead.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm one of those people of color. I'm one of the few people of color on the board. And I think my role has been there to be the voice for those that have never had a voice there. I know that we had issues at the high school. As a result of that, we've implemented, you know, a K-12 social justice framework within the district that hopefully will develop the whole issue of American culture, ethnic studies, and be able to discuss and engage students in conversations about people, the differences of people. I know that we just voted on supporting the Black Lives Matter Week in February in celebration during Black History Month in February of 2021, again, in response to the students' voices that they feel that they were not being heard. So we are trying in terms of the district, for those that feel that they're being marginalized, that there is a voice there. We're giving them that voice. I was there and did support the students during the gun control issue, even though the board set limitations. I was there as a legal advisor to make sure that our students remain safe during that process.
Tom.
Thank you.
If I can, if I can respond to that, you know, I certainly appreciate your 20 years of service on the board. And someone said it earlier that 20 years was a long time, and then we needed to revisit the policy. I think it was the Rent Control Board people. 20 years is a long time, and there is something to be said for institutional knowledge. But now's the time for change, and now's the time for more innovative thought. Because saying that we're trying to work on it, we're going to work on it, we have worked on it, and yet those issues still remain is unacceptable. And so we need to have new leadership that can come forward to bring these children into their best selves. And that's what I'm going to do when I get on the board.
Well, see, you're saying the same thing. You're going to bring it, so you don't have a plan either. I think the fact that I'm saying that we do have a framework already set up.
Actually, actually, I disagree. I actually have a plan. When I was chief strategy officer of the Tesla Foundation, which was a think tank focused on all things autonomous, we had a plan. We executed that plan at Anaheim, East Anaheim Unified School District with Latinos and black children on the other side of the track. Most folks don't go into college. And we implemented an aerobatics course where they had their Part 107 license, where I created modules for critical thinking for public policy and entrepreneurship. And at the end of the year, these kids created business models. This one young girl created a model where she was using aerobatics with LiDAR and infrared sensors and was going to move those aerobatics into former theaters of war to sort of discern where those unexploited ordinances were so that kids' legs weren't getting blown off. So we created a module where these kids were dynamic and robust, solving real-world problems. Real-world problems with passion and with activity. So I've done that. I'm an education innovator. My work as a visiting scholar at Media X, Stanford Graduate School of Education, where humanities intersects with technology. I know this work, and I've done this work, and I continue to do that work. So I don't, I don't agree with your assessment that I haven't brought it because my record stands for itself.
Thank you, Keith. And let's finally go to John.
I think it's the job of the board to create opportunities for the educators. And I think Dr. Antonio Shelton has carried himself proudly and served our community well in these past few months. I'm going to go way off the board here and talk about me a little bit. In my professional life, I'm a documentary filmmaker. I work with, I've worked with Holocaust survivors for 20 years. I've worked with Rwandan survivors. I am neither. I am the other when I go to Rwanda or when I go to Ukraine. But my job is to listen. Um, but my job is to listen and to hear experience and to distill it into a narrative, to hear the stories, to see the world through other eyes. It's the same thing when you come to the board. Um, I don't have to look like a whole, a female Holocaust survivor to tell her story. I'm not an English language learner. Uh, I am not homeless. I have, do not have special needs. But I know what it means to look through other eyes, to hear the stories, and to try to create narrative. What it means to be on the board is that being a school member is not about me. It is about me trying to be a conduit from the community to the district and back. And that's, that's the key thing right here. I teach on ethnic studies at Chapman University. I know that I don't have to look like a certain thing, but I have to be open, empathetic, and real.
Thank you, John. And um, now let's go on to the next question. Um, even though Malibu is not in a position to unify right now, there still seems to be a desire by that community to separate from Santa Monica. In your opinion, what happened to cause this divide and where do you see the conflict headed? And we're going to go to John with this one.
It's a real change from where we just were, I think. Anyway, um, the the, I think the conflict started back when the equity fund started. We were trying to find a way to make one school raising $20,000 or one school raising a million dollars. That doesn't make sense. That infuriated people. I think then there was the, then the PCB showed up and other issues and it created a rift. I think the future of Malibu is we need to have a real conversation about Malibu. They have declining enrollment. They can't offer the same level of courses that we have in Santa Monica. We need to find a way to create a vibrant curriculum in Malibu. And look at us now with flipped classrooms uh, and distance learning. This is the opportunity we've been looking for, I think. I I don't believe that the younger families in Malibu feel the same way. I don't. If they do and unification is not possible, I would be all in favor of a very loose, dependent charter where they remain a part of our district, but they have their own leadership. They have their own board, but they don't have their own, the money would still be, still be shared in the same manner. I think they want a vigorous curriculum and they want their own opportunity for uh,
Thank you, time.
Thanks. Let's go to Keith.
Uh, well, I think the issue of the separation is a complex one. I think that there have been a number of years uh, in dialogue related to same. Um, and actually, I think that that both cities or both parties are actually at a place where they're now uh, comfortable with the arrangement to separate. Um, and now it's just a question of how is this marriage going to be dissolved with relationship to uh, financial structuring? And so that that's my take on it. And I I I hear John's comments related to declining enrollment in Malibu and and that may be the case. Um, you know, the the other party believes that that in some respects, there's a form of uh, taxation without representation or that they're the ugly stepchild. And so perhaps, again, as parties recognize that that dissolution may be something that's worthwhile, uh, we wanna make sure that uh, is made whole financially uh, in the future if that goes forward.
Thanks, Keith. Let's go to Maria.
Well, the conversation still goes on. For me, it it's something that even that has started even before I was on the board. It's been going on for probably about 30 years, off and on. And like John said, it it escalated when we decided to do, you know, um, district-wide fundraising for the equity issues involved with it. And it's just the, the, I think the few people in the city of Malibu that feel that they wanted, like they want a private situation in a public school setting. And it's all based on finances. I think right now, because of all uh, the fire that they had and some floods in in Malibu, um, there's gonna be issues in terms of finance of whether we can continue on. The conversation will go on, but it's just a matter of the discussing in terms of the finances involved. But I do agree with John. I think it's a, it's a situation where we have to look at it and perhaps it's something we can arrange with them so that they can have still control like we did. We split the fundraising piece now. Malibu has their own fundraising mechanism apart from Santa Monica that maybe we can continue to do that in terms of the education um, that they're gonna
Thank you, time.
And still be part of Santa Monica, Malibu.
Thank you, and now let's go to Jason.
Thank you. Um, you know, the, the board voted on this in 2017, um, and it was rejected by this board because uh, Santa Monica would lose money and uh, Malibu didn't seem to have enough students to be able to sustain their own district. And it only seems like those problems have been exacerbated with our current budget crisis and with the fires in Malibu and their shrinking enrollment. Uh, that that said though, I mean, you know, we, we, we can't force this union to stay together. If uh, if if Malibu really does want to split, we're gonna have to make a deal. We have to make a deal that works for Santa Monica uh, as well as Malibu, but a a deal's gonna have to be struck.
Can I, I'm, I'm just confused by one thing in there. The board took a vote in 2017 that was unanimous to pursue a unification as long as neither cohort was was uh, was harmed by the split. That was a unanimous vote and we put a negotiating committee together to work on that so that neither side would be dis, uh, to be hurt financially. It's a very complex thing and COVID has thrown the real wrench into it. But that committee is still, is still working. It's just become more difficult through COVID.
And it's all based on finances. It's all based on finance.
A lot of it is. There's other issues too. There's nine, there's nine issues that have to get resolved for unification and finances are one of them.
Thank you, and let's go to Jen.
I'm sorry, Jen, I thought you'd already gone. I apologize.
That's okay. Um, I, um, no, so I, I do think that we do need to work, we need, we need to work um, with Malibu to bolster and make their programming and their schools uh, more robust and provide every student there with the programming that they uh, that broad, broad programming as that can mimic Santa Monica, I think. Um, and I do, I mean, I don't, I don't know what that looks like. I do think they've hit some roadblocks in being able to manage to figure out how to do it and what the financial pieces look like. And I think that we just keep, need to keep working at what is the best thing, what is the best thing? I think representation is very important to them and I think that we can find a way. I don't know much about the um, the charter that John mentioned, but it seems like that could be a path to a solution on both ends because they'd have the representation of their own and we would be, um, we would be able to support them in what they need if they couldn't do it on their own.
Okay, thank you. And then this is just a quick yes or no question on the same topic, uh, just to make sure everyone's clear. And I know there are some people from Malibu here. Would you support a fair, amicable separation into two school districts if it was brought before you? Yes, raise your hand. Okay, great. So that is a yes for every candidate. Okay, and uh, our next question before we get to the closing statements. Uh, for a generation, our students have been facing the threat of violent school shootings across the country. I myself was in eighth grade during Columbine and the issue is still very much with us today. How will you assure parents and students that when in-person education resumes, they will be safe on our campuses while also protecting their privacy and civil liberties? And we're going to go to Maria first.
Well, in that respect, I think we have a great safety mechanism set up um, in in our district. We have cameras that have been, that are being set up around the perimeters of the schools. Um, we won't wanna do it inside because that would be a violation of the, I think, of the students' privacy. But I think that for the, for the most part, I seen uh, our safety and the, and it's a protocol that that's that's reviewed uh, on a yearly basis with the staff and every school has their safety plan. And and it's an overall that that I seen um, the, our center, our, our, our command center in, in full use when they had the, the shooting at Santa Monica College some years back. So I know that that they take it seriously and we're not going to go to the point where we're gonna have, you know, um, armed officers or anything like that. But we do work closely with the Santa Monica Police that, with them, and we have um, community officers that come and visit our schools. And there's a lot of education that goes on with school, with students, with them involved and with principals involved. And I think with teenagers involved in that safety piece too.
Thank you, and let's go to John.
We need to legislate harder. We need to push harder at the federal level. Uh, it is, it it is disgusting. It is a moral outrage that our students learn drop and cover rules, that we've had three different ideas of what to do when there's a shooter on campus. Do you run? Do you hide in place? Do you go here? It's morally reprehensible. Um, I don't like the idea of turning our school into a, into a, uh, gates and metal detectors and police, but I've lectured at Marjorie Stone and Douglas. Friends of mine were teaching at Marjorie Stone and Douglas when, I'm, I'm, I'm teaching a Holocaust Studies class and and the teacher Ivy Seamus turns to the girl and says, well, Debbie, you were here when the, when the shooter came in. Why don't you tell me what you feel? This is a national outrage. Uh, I'm sorry that I'm not really addressing our question, but this is personal to me and I'm outraged by our inability to take action on this. Get Biden in office, flip the Senate, and get this fixed.
Thank you, John. And let's go to uh, Jason.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, you know, I I appreciate your, your passion on this, John, but you know, it's, it's not something that we can, we can pass off to the, to to the feds, although we could definitely use more support. Um, you know, I'm, I'm against surveillance on campus. I'm against armed officers. But at the same time, this is a heartbreaking, heartbreaking issue, but it 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 can't be ignored. It, it, it has to be dealt with and Maria's right, you you know, uh, you have to have safety plans and it, it sounds like they do have safety plans, but there's other, there's, you know, safety has to be paramount at our schools and there are other safety issues other than shooting, which can be um, you you know, covered by a lot of these safety plans. You know, there's subductions, there's, there's uh, people that are students on campus that are, would would deal drugs or or do violence. All that can be dealt with in the same way with limiting access to campus, having surveillance around the perimeters. I mean, it has to, you you know, it's, it's ridiculous that we have to do these, you know, these drills, but at the same time, you gotta do them. You gotta be ready for it. If anything, all of these incidents that have happened before, we need to learn from them.
Thank you, and let's go to Keith.
Um, well, this is a perplexing issue. Um, you know, a lot of folks would say, hey, let's just legislate this away. Uh, you know, then there's the, the folks that say guns don't kill people, people kill people. Uh, but my, my mom taught at Crenshaw High and so 30 years ago, all these issues that we're talking about here were rampant there. And so, you know, violence and et cetera is is a real thing. Uh, but I'm for creating surveillance. I mean, the kids know what surveillance is. Kids give away their data, actually. There's CCTV everywhere, so I'm not that concerned with surveillance on campus. I think that if there are officers on campus, they need to have more than biased training. They need some intelligence amplification. Um, because they need to understand that they have a role to play so that they're not, you know, traumatizing students on campus. And then secondly, um, the, the issue is that this is about values and a belief system. We can't legislate this away. There has to be some sense of collective impact where.
You wanna finish your sentence, Keith?
Yeah, there has to be some sense of collective impact as, as a society uh, for folks to have better decision-making, a different set of values and different set of belief systems relative to these kinds of forms of behavior. So legislation and enforcement is is not the only part of this formula.
Thank you, and then finally, let's go to Jen.
Thank you. So I, I would say that a very large part of what we need to address on campus with kids, uh, besides any kind of outside forces, where I think having closed campuses is prudent, outside cameras is prudent, knowing who's on our campus is prudent, which we do now have systems in place where you have to show ID every time you walk in. But mental health is uh, what we need to focus on to make sure we know all our kids and we know where they are and we know how they're feeling and we know what, where, where they are in their, in their mental um, soundness and if they are feeling depressed, uh, using substances, um, feeling bullied, uh, and and all of those things that have, we have seen create um, create violence that seems to be more out of control. Now, on, on, there are other types of violence on campus and I think that those are other issues, but the shooter stuff.
Thank you, time.
Sorry.
Great, thank you so much.
I, I do, I wanna thank Jen for bringing up four concrete things that have been done by the district in the past two years. The closed campuses, the perimeter surveillance, um, the, the new ID systems and the mental health services. So thank you for bringing those up, Jennifer.
Okay, thank you, candidates. Now we're gonna go to the closing statements. You each have 30 seconds. Uh, we're going to start with John Keane.
Okay, um, I come from PTA. I was, I was a PTA dad. I, um, in the PTA world, you show up and you work and you don't finish until you get it done, whether that's painting bathrooms for 40 hours or checking for lice in three or, you know, third grade heads. It's what we do. Um, I feel that the board has done a good job over the past four years of being leadership for three of those years. If you agree with that, I don't see how you can remove me from the calculus of the success of this board. I want the opportunity to get four more.
Thank you, time.
Thank you, and now let's go to Jason.
Thank you, 30 seconds. Wow, all right. I'm a, uh, I'm a parent in this district with two kids and I think we need more parents on the board. I'm a civil rights attorney. I've been fighting for the underdog my whole career, fighting for prisoners, fighting for indigent defendants, fighting for uh, people facing discrimination and workplace harassment, and I wanna fight for the kids and families of the Santa Monica School District. Thank you. This is my daughter Sarah.
Hello. Shout out. Voting for him. Thank you.
Hey, that can't be allowed.
Within the, that was within the 30 seconds. Okay, and now let's go to Jen.
I'm sorry, um, thank you. Um, so I've been advocating for our schools in Santa Monica for Malibu, in Santa Monica and Malibu for over a decade. And I'm proud to be a lifelong Democrat and a woman running for office. I've served as the PTA president of the Santa Monica Malibu Council of PTL, TAs, as well as the PTA president of two school sites. I co-chair GS and GSH and the SMS Bond Campaign. Currently, I'm serving on the Superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee, the Facilities District Advisory Committee, the Samo High, Samo High PTSA Board.